All right, we'll call to order this work-study meeting of the school district, the Inupiat School District. But then, please, all the roles.
Kimball?
Here.
Nope, I'm doing it backwards. Mullin?
Here.
Newberg?
Here.
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
All right, we have a relatively short agenda this evening, which I'm sure everybody's excited about, but we'll turn to our first discussion item, B1, and that is overview of social work support. Should I just ask Ms. Daniels to?
Yeah.
All right.
I'd like to introduce my co-chair, Kathleen Daniels.
Welcome, Ms. Daniels.
Thank you. I'm Director of Social Work Services, and thank you for having us tonight, Madam Chair, members of the school board, colleagues. And tonight, I'd like to introduce Avis Fink, who many of you know, have known for a long time, and she's our-
Legendary.
Coordinator of Social Worker District-
No pressure.
Legendary. And we have a new social worker this year, who's our lead social worker and staff development person, John Nochsein. And tonight, we'd like to talk a little bit about our added services that Avis and John are providing for the district. As you know, last year, we did our chemical and mental health review, and we had some recommendations that came out of that review. And I'm so excited because our recommendations are really coming to fruition, and we're excited about our new staff and our new model to help our families. And just to remind you that one of the recommendations was to increase staff awareness of available community resources to our students and parents who have both basic needs, as well as mental health and chemical health needs. And then, the other recommendation that I think is directly related is to increase support for district-wide around mental health. So, in your materials tonight, you had a couple things, just they were, it was just this, really, the schedules of the added staff that we had in elementary buildings. We added a part-time social worker to every elementary building across the district. And then, part of John's time, in addition to having two buildings, is to develop staff, potential staff development training for all staff in the district around mental and chemical health. And so, you have a schedule, which is just, you know, for your reference and to see who the new people are. And then, John and Avis, we're going to talk about the potential responsibilities our new social work positions in elementary and what they're seeing with these new positions. It's, what, three weeks in, maybe? And John's already met with some of our community partners, and he's met with the staff, as well as Avis, and working together to make sure we're starting off on a strong note here. So, I'm going to let them just talk a little bit about what they're doing this fall and how they see it moving forward to make sure that we're getting services to families. So, thank you for having us.
Before we do that, can you pronounce your name?
Nochsein.
Nochsein.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, with our social workers, they're getting started with getting to know the staff in each of their buildings and just starting to get to know the kids. And, you know, the goal is to get some groups going to support the students, as well as going into classroom and doing some classroom instructional time on social emotional learning, as well as just, you know, some of it is developing, what can the social worker do to help the buildings out? Because we've never had a social worker in an elementary building, so John's been working with the team to develop some role definition of what they can, you know, do to offer support to the buildings. What are some other things?
Yeah, and I believe, was that attached?
Yes, yep.
Kathleen, the roles and responsibilities. So, the big difference with not only having social workers in the elementary schools, it's more of a general education approach. So, you'll have social workers who, in theory, are available to all students, which is a bit of a difference. Students who are not necessarily on an IEP or require special services, but someone who's available to everyone else. But in addition, if there's crisis intervention, of course, then any student, you know, can receive, you know, service or an intervention. Where the crossing point is between the general ed and special ed world would be with the parents. This will allow us to offer services to parents of students who are general education and special education, even outside of the school. So, really looking at supporting parents and engaging parents in the educational process of their student, and just supporting what's going on at home to carry over into school. And that's a big part of the impetus behind this, is really to support the whole child. And that's, it's new, it's a bit of a process. I did, I was one of the only gen ed social workers in Duluth School District before coming here. And it was a challenge to be able to have folks in the building understand that general ed means there could be 600 kids in one building that could fall under my, you know, ability to work with. And that's a little bit big of an undertaking, but we want to make sure all the students have access to some service and don't fall through the cracks, so, and their families, so.
And you've already made some contacts with, like, Suburban Ramsey Family Collaborative and met with them and some of our other community partners and-
And that'll be another piece, is just really partnering with the community resources we have to bring, you know, the awareness of students who are struggling with mental health into the schools, to the staff, so they can feel informed as educators on, okay, if I have a student who's struggling with that, I have resources where I know where to go. I can go to the social worker, who then in turn could seek those resources for the family. And it just kind of cycles with each other. We'll work with the families to get services, and then it leads into the school and makes everybody's job a little bit easier, so. So, it's a bit of a learning curve, and it's a bit of an undertaking, but I think we have a real good step in the right direction on it, so.
And I think the other thing is just kind of continuing to build on that intervention in the school building, having the social worker there to meet with the students. But then, we also have our school linked to mental health services, so when students need that, several of our buildings do have therapists that come in and can meet with students, so. And just kind of building that capacity to support students so that they can do better in the classroom, so.
And we have one date set aside, November 21st, where John's working with Avis and other community partners to develop a half-day training for all staff. So, the entire, all general ed, special ed, everybody is going to have a training. We've got some ideas, we're kind of in the planning stages, and we're going to have a pan, we're hoping to have a panel of experts where people can be more of a Q and A, and then working in small groups. And then, we're also going to have a speaker on mental health, hopefully from the University of Minnesota, or someone that can follow up on some of the work that we did last year. And then, I don't know if, John, if you want to talk a little bit about, not that we've adopted this program, but we're hoping that when we're looking at some of our more complex families, that we'll be able to do some home visits and some things directly with the families. And we haven't really launched that or really done that yet, but John came from a strong background where he did a lot of training around home visits and the positive impact that has on families and children when staff, when staff actually sit down in a parent's home and talk to them about their child. They don't come in and talk about a report and how they're doing, but they just go in to talk to the family and meet them and make those connections and what a positive impact that has, not just academically, but just the relationship with the schools. And maybe you want to talk a little bit about what you did in Duluth? We haven't, you know, we're not doing that yet, but-
So, in Duluth, we brought what's called the Parent-Teacher Home Visit Project to Duluth. St. Paul is one of the national leaders in that. And we partnered with St. Paul to bring that program to Duluth. And essentially, what it is was having teachers that were, that would volunteer, be willing to be trained, to go out and meet with the families at their home. In Duluth, we had a unique reason why we did that. We had a building that was really inaccessible to our parents. About a mile-long driveway up 300 feet, in the middle of winter, it was real difficult where the city buses wouldn't run, so there wasn't any public transportation. So, we had to think outside the box in terms of how do we engage parents with that physical barrier that we had. And this was something that I had proposed to our principal and eventually was adopted. But really, the concept is, is really trying to level that playing field between parent and teacher, and to really go in with the question of what's the hopes and dreams for your child? And that's the question that we would have teachers go out, and it was completely voluntary, both on the family's end and the teacher's end. But that one simple question would really kind of level the playing field in terms of the parent realizing the teacher really does care about my child's hopes and dreams, and the teacher would also realize that the parent's hopes and dreams are very similar to what we, as a school, wanted for that student. Long story short, ended up being a very successful program. It's still continuing there. We were fortunate to get a sizable grant up north to, you know, to make this happen. But bringing that down here, it's really starting to look at going outside the walls of the school to support our students. And that's something we hope to kind of continue looking at over the next year, so.
And right now, it would be probably a social worker and maybe one other staff person, sometimes during the day, because we can't have people going out outside their workday to do that. So, we're just starting to make some contacts with families and figuring out how that would work with us. So, we're just talking about it as a district and seeing if it would be a good fit for us. There's one more thing that you had said that made me think. Oh, I was just, when you look at the schedule, you can see that all of our, all of our social workers, with the exception of one who's only .4, have multiple schools. So, even with this new initiative, and we're so appreciative and we're so excited about it, we already have buildings that are saying, yeah, two days is great, but three or four days would be better, right? Because they see the need that we have with families to have more time. But everybody's so appreciative and happy to have people in the schools now to help, help our families and our students. And prior to that, it wasn't that people weren't reaching out to families, but it was, again, our school psychologists who were kind of wearing the hat. Every hat there was to wear, it was being worn by our elementary school psychologist. So, now, they have a partner in that work, so it's been just really wonderful.
Well, thank you to the three of you. I have to say, I'm so excited about this moving forward and getting additional resources in social work, especially for the elementary schools. And with all the different hats I wear personally on the school board where I interact with kids, it just seems like a growing need every single year. We need more support services, more social work services available to these kids. Let me ask you a question before I open it up to everybody else. On the middle school and high school level, I see we have some special ed social work available on the schedule in Central and Sunrise. Do we have general social workers available at the middle schools, and what's the situation at North and South?
Okay, well, we don't. We have our counseling staff in secondary buildings, and we, at this time, they sort of wear that hat to engage families and do some of that work. And in elementaries, of course, we didn't have any counseling staff, so that's where we started with elementaries. And then, secondary, we have our social workers that are supported through special education dollars, and they're usually tagged to programs or a group of students, and that's kind of how we do it. We have a halftime at North and South. We have a .3 at Sunrise and a .3 at Central. And then, we do have, actually, a full-time social worker at ALC and Insight. So, secondary has a social work person, but in terms of their availability to all students, it's not there, so.
Anyone else have questions? Ms. Wilson?
As I was often fond of opening an exam question, compare and contrast. I'm trying to figure out where the lines of division are, if you'll allow division. And Kathleen, you were starting to answer quite a few of this, quite a bit of this. Your position as social worker compared to the school psychologist, compared to the school counselor, compared to the resource, special ed instructor and teacher?
So, kind of, you know, some of the way we actually funded this position, at least a portion, some of it was funding right from general ed, but what Wayne and I had a long discussion about internally in our staff too, is we took, our psychologists in the past had .6 special education and .4 general education. So, they were dual-funded. And so, we decided, because our psychologists are evaluating more and more students, and they're also case-managing special education students, and that, I don't know if some of you were all here for the DMC report that we did several years ago, and that came to light during that whole time study that we did, that our psychologists were really, you know, tied up in both evaluation and case management, and then had this whole other part of their job. So, we took all those element, now, this is elementary-only, all those elementary school psychs, and we put them into special education. So, in doing that, we get some reimbursement from the state. We get between 58, 60% on those positions. So, we took the money that was then freed up from the general fund, because we weren't using that .4 anymore, and that's how we transferred that money over to purchase social workers. And now, the psychs now are not doing the intervention in the small group and the home visits and doing all that. So, they're concentrating now on special education evaluation, case management, and of course, working side-by-side with the social workers on lots of things they're doing in the building. So, that's kind of the difference between their roles. And remember, elementary, they do not have counselors, so elementary schools don't have any-
They have secondary.
Yeah, just secondary. So, really, for elementary, it was just that school psych that did kind of all of that. And then, if you're thinking about a case manager for special education, those are licensed staff that have to case manage certain students that are, meet criteria for different disability categories. So, we have DCD and LD and autism and EBD. So, that isn't the school psych. They case manage kids that are Level 1 and 2 for a lot of behavior reasons and social emotional reasons. And then, we have all these other kids that don't qualify for special education, but they still need services for, in support for groups and for other things. And that's, that's, yep, if that kind of helps.
There were a lot that used to fall through the cracks.
Yeah.
And that's what we're trying to-
Yet, there was no program for them.
Well, one example that I've used is, you know, I can be available to that straight-A student who is socially well-adjusted, but is just having a real difficult time, maybe on something that's happening outside of the school that's impacting their ability to learn. Whereas normally, that student may not be eligible for any particular service, well, now, in theory, they are. So, I could be able to just approach, even if it's a one- or two-time type deal, it's still a service that could help, you know, allow them to focus in the class a bit better.
And on that subject, and this was a question I had in my mind beforehand, how are students referred to social services here? Are self-referral allowed, or?
It could be. What I've done in my schools, and I've shared with the other elementary workers, is initially, I've drafted like an email for all staff just to explain, because there have been a lot of questions on what exactly is your role, what does that mean to be general education, and shared that. And then, I created a, basically, a Google form that any staff can type in a name and just a general concern of what's going on with that student, which then gets kicked back to me via email. So, when I come into the buildings, for example, I'm at Hugo on Mondays, but just Monday, I can come in and have a list of students with some identified concerns or parent concerns, or parents come in and say, do you have someone my student can talk to because of whatever issues going on? So, it creates, it generates a list for me of students that I can see, and potentially, I could see, you know, 10, 15 students a day. So, it's more of a, it's a broader scope and more ability to see more kids.
On that broader scope, academic, emotional, physical?
Pretty much anything.
Correct.
Yeah, people running family change groups, you know, families go through a lot of changes, divorce, death, all kinds of things, and, you know, those all impact student learning, of course.
And I think the social worker, Birch, sorry to interrupt, is going in, and she's doing the zones of regulation for each class, so she's kind of working her way up the grade levels and so kind of introducing that, how do I keep my body calm for all kids? So, it's kind of getting out there and teaching skills within the classroom, as well as doing that individual time with students, which, when it was, when the psychologist was trying to do everything, it was hard to get that more specialized kind of outreach to all students.
What is the physical layout for your room, ranging, in my mind, I'm used to seeing a psychologist's office as an office with a piece or two of comfort furniture, compared to ASD, which has all sorts of release furniture, if you will, bouncing balls and all sorts of things in there. So, where does your facility lie?
So, for me, it'd be a similar setup as a psychologist's office. You know, the desk and then some comfort chairs. I have a table in my primary office, which is at Onika. Table with chairs, so when families come in, because I'm big on the family engagement piece, you know, bring folks into the school and have a discussion on whatever issue arises that can't be resolved within the school. And then, my hope is to have, you know, a bigger area with resources, so when parents walk in, they would have almost like a resource rack to grab, you know, whatever they need from. And that'll be in the works, because I'm just not as familiar with the resources here as I was in Duluth. So, as those come in, you know, to create that at each school, to have, you know, accessible materials. But, you know, it's a private office where students can come in for really any reason and just feel comfortable to be there, and then, you know, quickly go back into class when they're done. But with the multiple buildings, then, there's different space setups for each worker, so each school kind of has their own, their own arrangement. So, I'm fortunate at Onika to have a, I'm sorry.
Are they permitted to check out of class to come see you?
They are. What I always do is I always check with the teacher to find out what's a time that's least disruptive to the child's education. And so, if it's after instruction time, during work time, and maybe it's a lighter day of work time, then, you know, I'll coordinate with the teacher on that. And I think all of us are doing the same approach. We just want to be as least intrusive of the school day as we can, so.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, and a comment. First off, I really like what I'm hearing here. I like the idea that we are beefing up our presence on a social work side of things, because Chair Newberg had mentioned, there are just so many issues out here today that families and kids are dealing with, and I think this is really an important cog in the whole mix. Question though, first off, how many social workers did we have prior to this, serving the elementary community? Maybe I missed, maybe you had mentioned that early on, and I may have missed it, but how many did we have?
No, we, again, we only had social workers through special education funding. So, we had 1.4 through special education funding, but in, it's called CEIS funding, it's through federal dollars. And so, anybody who's funded through that cannot work with students that are on IEPs, cannot work with students that are entitled, cannot work with students who are in AdSIS intervention, because that's considered sort of like double-dipping, because they're, those are also programs that are supported through the same stream of funding. And so, when we purchased that social worker through those federal funds, it was so limiting. And so, there would be needs in the building, and then the social worker would have to say, well, yeah, I'd like to help, but I'm really not, that's not a student, because they're on an IEP, that's not a student that I can work with. I mean, the laws were very strict, so we decided that wasn't a good way to use those CEIS dollars, because they were too restrictive. So, instead, we just shifted money from general fund into special ed, so our psychs are all 100% special ed, and then use those dollars to free up in the general fund, which is everybody. So, that's, so we didn't have much. We had, we had one, one social worker that worked in three buildings, two days in, two buildings and one day in another, and then we had a .4 in another building. So, now, we've tried to really distribute by the size of the building and have touch points in every elementary.
Ms. Chapman?
How does this model, you know, do we have a sense of how we compare to other districts around, such as Roseville, North, St. Paul, so forth, as far as, you know, are we, are we doing, are we moving, you know, up there, where we're on par with them, ahead of them in terms of, you know, the support? Or are we lagging?
I don't think we're lagging. I think we're, everybody, I mean, I, from what I know of the northeast suburban districts, everybody's trying to be creative about how to help kids. So, everybody has a little bit different model in terms of, in some buildings, for example, or some districts, the school psychs only do testing, they never work with kids. And so, we have a little bit different, we've always had psychologists that do more than just testing, they run groups, they provide services, they provide a ton of support. So, in those buildings or those districts that only use psych for testing, they may have had already a social worker involved to support some of these services. So, every district has a little bit different model, but every district has some combination of psychs and social workers at different levels. So, I can't really answer specifically, like, every district has one full-time in every building. I don't, I don't think that's the case. I think they use, there are more social workers in the city schools, I know for sure. St. Paul has, you know, a lot more social workers than we do, but I can say that their psychs, for sure, are used for testing and not working directly with students, so, yeah. I guess I'm not really answering specifically, but I would say, in general, we're, we're like every other district in trying to come up with creative ways to support all of our students and for an ever-changing and, I would say, more complicated student body.
I think that all-
I was just going to say that I think, just adding on to what Kathleen said, is I think
that a lot of districts around the metro and even in rural areas are just feeling that need for more of that social, emotional, and mental health. And like Kathleen said, it's, you know, with only so much funding, how do you stretch it and kind of try to meet that capacity? And so, some of it's, I think, as a district, we're very supportive of our students by adding in the, the social workers at the elementary, but then it's layering in those outside community partnerships too. So, it's constantly with John and I trying to build different partnerships with our community to, for that mental health too, and for parent support related to mental health and education around mental health, so.
Thank you.
Hello, and I say thank you for all your creatively doing for the kids, because it's needed. And I'm just trying to clarify, and I'm looking at it from the long view of seeing, at times in the past, at secondary, we had more social workers, and then we had fewer, and a lot of it was based on changes in funding, feds and the state. So, is this creative improvement, any supported at all by new monies from federal or state, or are we just having to rearrange the funds and take from the general fund? Was there any funding for this?
No, we shifted some funding to make it truly, so it wasn't, we, we did get, because of our report and our recommendation, I don't know if you remember, that Wayne approved some social work time out of the general funding last year to have sort of a lead social worker to do that staff development part and be kind of a navigator and work with across buildings. And then, we did that funding shift from, in special education, to free up funds from the general fund. But, Marge, years ago, we used to have a social worker on the counseling staff in all of our secondary, and I think those positions, some of them are still there, and some of them shifted to counseling staff.
I think it was funded for a while specifically as social workers. I remember that, a push for that. And I just optimistically was hoping maybe there was a push for funding, and that helped with some of this, but not yet.
Well, no, I mean, there was, as a result of our study, so I think there was-
But it was local, it hasn't yet come from feds or state.
Right, but we're, you know, we have, we work with two different collaboratives, Ramsey County Children's Mental Health Collaborative and the Suburban Ramsey Family Collaborative, and they're, they're with us in terms of writing grants and sharing those grants with us and freeing up, or helping support funding for the work that we're doing. And so, not coming out of local dollars so much, but there is some government available that we're hoping that our collaboratives are going to get access to and then will be trickled down to us.
You're a good collaborator, and you're lucky you live in the metro.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Kimball?
Yeah, I just wonder, you know, if we have more staff now, we have social workers at the elementary, which I'm hearing everybody, including me, just applaud, and if we hired, you know, tutors at the, if we hired this many, X many more tutors, we would measure success of those tutors on standardized test scores or something. So, now, with additional social workers, what, what kind of way do we measure how we're helping?
I think that's always a million-dollar question for social, emotional, and for, for any kinds of things that we really can't get necessarily a beat on or a score on if a student's, I guess we can look at things that we can measure, which are attendance and truancy and time out of school and referrals to the office and time out of class, which we do keep track of. But I don't know that we have yet developed a way to, three weeks into it, how we're going, how we're going to do that. You know, we hope, we hope, because we're supporting students, that everything's going to improve, including academics. I mean, that's our, a big hope. And then, also, just students not being out of class for discipline or social, emotional reasons, having to either leave school or go to the nurse or be in the principal's office, or- office or, you know, time out of class. So I don't know that I have a good answer. Um, I don't think we have a, a tool yet that really can measure always the health of an individual and how to do that in a way that's, I don't know, without some kind of narrative.
No, I'm just suggesting it might be good.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea. Well, with the, for sure.
Any other questions?
Thinking of the family visit aspect of the program, you are mandatory reporters, are you not? So that would open that up if you see conditions that require legal intervention.
Any other questions?
Thank you for not only coming tonight for, for everything you guys are doing for our kids. Fabulous work. Thanks for coming. Thank you.
Well, turn to our next discussion item, and that is comprehensive, comprehensive gifted and talented programming. Ms. Paul.
Welcome, Ms. Paul. Hi. Thank you, madam.
Dr. Katschek, members of the board. We're excited to be here to talk about our comprehensive gifted and talented programming. This was a strategic priority identified when the last strategic plan was drafted. At that time, we had, um, what are called REACH teachers, which would pull students out to provide enrichment and supports. And the board had identified that they really wanted to look at this comprehensively to meet student needs. And so the district, um, has since designed a four-tiered, four levels of service, comprehensive programming for gifted and talented students. And Jo Tate is going to lead us through this presentation. She has been a great person that the district has brought on board and is seen as not only a leader statewide, um, but actually took us through not only the design, but the implementation for us to really be in full implementation of this programming for our students. And so I'm excited for you to hear perspectives from staff and, um, and teachers, um, just to hear the impact that the program has had. And do we have our student? And he stayed home to eat. And our parent is here, though. Good. All right. So we do have a spaghetti night. All right. All right. So I'll hand that out to Jo Tate then.
He's 10.
Yes. Thank you, Chair, Chair Newberg and members of the board and cabinet. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to give you an update on what we're doing for our gifted learners. Gifted and high achieving learners, not just the gifted. I will introduce the group as their part comes in. So the graphic that I just went past, um, shows the, the bottom level, which is level one, is what happens in the classroom for kids who are showing a little more growth than others and the differentiation that goes on with the classroom teacher. Then we go to level two, and that is our, what has, was called the REACH program before. It still is, but, um, we've added a little more to what used to go on. And, um, we'll talk more about what that is. Then level three is our gifted clusters. And that goes on in every building of, um, every elementary building in grades three through five. And it means there's a small group of identified gifted kids in an otherwise heterogeneous mix of students in that classroom. So there, the gifted ones are clustered together. The other part of the definition is they're with a teacher who has had additional training in working with gifted learners. Then if we go up to the top of the pyramid, that is our explorations program for the exceptionally gifted. And that is also grades three, four and five. And in that case, all students in the program are exceptionally gifted. Maybe not in reading and math, but they are exceptionally gifted in one of the areas. And again, those teachers have had additional training in working with gifted. So I'd like to just kind of go through the levels. For level two services, we have three teachers that cover nine buildings. So they're spread a little bit thin, but they do provide good service. They're providing service for grades K through five, mostly first through fifth. They provide enrichments and study skills. And to talk about that level is Diane Nichol. She's one of our three REACH teachers.
Hello. Thank you. I teach at three of the elementary schools and my two coworkers, we do very similar things. We try very hard to make it a uniform program across the district. So like Jo said, we work with the kids who've been identified as cluster, and they come to us about once a week for just 30 minutes. And we do all kinds of things with them to both encourage teamwork, but also to encourage that they get to know themselves as learners. Um, they think it's all fun and games, but it's amazing. They learn, um, all kinds of famous people who have failed. They find out whether they're introverts or extroverts. They find out if they're an optimist or a pessimist. They find out if they're maybe a natural leader or maybe someone who's a little quieter, a more calm leader. So it's kind of, they get to know themselves, but we also really encourage that they work together on things to, for a purpose. Um, and so that's just the half an hour. I try to keep the groups smaller, though. Some schools, I have 20 kids in a cluster. And so I take them in smaller groups, because it's really important that they can talk to some like-minded kids. And they might not look the same, or they might not act the same outside of that room, but when they get together and they all find out, "Oh, my gosh, you're an introvert too? I didn't know," you know, they kind of can relate to each other on a different level. Um, the other part of my job, as Jo said, is level two services with the high achieving kids, and that's kindergarten all the way through fifth grade. And we service them in literacy and math, but we try to make it as relevant and integrated as possible. So like, one of our classes is called mystery class, and the kids don't really know if they're doing reading or math. I mean, they're just doing longitude, latitude, research, finding clues, tracking things down, and, "Oh, yeah, I am using math skills." And, "Oh, I guess I do know how to research and make a presentation." But the goal is to find out where this mystery location is, and that's really relevant to them. I don't know what it is either, so that's the fun part. I don't know, we do a lot of, try to make it interesting, because they're being pulled out of a really well-run classroom, so we have to make it worth their time to miss that. Hopefully we do.
Thank you, Diane. Then moving on to level three services, I mentioned they're at all of our elementary schools. Um, I think I did the, the basic definition. So to talk about level three is one of our gifted cluster teachers, Karen Walrick. She's at Lincoln.
Hi. I was part of the first training when Jo first came to the district, and I felt really honored and lucky to have received the training that I got. Um, the, they were touted as gifted and talented types of strategies, but Jo also said they're good strategies for all learners. So that's kind of how I run it in my classroom, and I know that, um, at least many of the other third-grade gifted and talented teachers look at it that way, too. Um, an, an example just from last week would be, um, a tiered lesson. So in math, I planned a lesson where all of my students were doing something with subtraction. And it looked on paper and some things pretty similar, but in fact, they were put into groups by me and they were doing something quite different amongst themselves in their groups. And then, um, I have a teacher candidate that's here on a part-time basis, and she was checking with one group and I was monitoring the other two groups. And, um, they were all doing some type of subtraction work at a level that was right and good for them and, um, challenging them at, at their level. Um, and tiered lessons are one of the types of lessons that could involve more planning, but there's also lots of things that can just be worked into typical lessons that have less planning and less materials to put together and all of that. And those are happening probably more frequently in my classroom, um, because they're much more readily available to do. And something like that would be, um, a comprehension strategy for reading where they are synthesizing material that, it can go with any material they're reading, but they're using a format that helps them pull out keywords. And, um, this is something I met or learned from you, and I use it in reading, I use it in social studies and science, and they pull out those keywords and then they're able to put a summary together using those keywords. And third graders are becoming already, just this year, quite adept at that. And it matches with the summarizing and synthesizing that we are doing in reading currently. So, um, it's very applicable, and, uh, my whole goal was to make sure that I, I really followed that whole strategy of, within my classroom, kids don't always really know which group they're a part of, um, that they're just learning at a level that's right and comfortable for them. And, um, that's what I strive for and, and have fun planning and finding new things to incorporate that and bring out the best in each of them.
Thank you, Karen. And the beauty is, we have a identification procedure to, if we say they will be part of the gifted cluster. But the beauty is, if they're a high achieving student and they didn't actually meet the criteria for the cluster, they can still get the services of level two through REACH. So there isn't an all or nothing kind of thing. And then our, um, level four is, I wanted to include the mission statement, because we worked on this this summer, what our, our mission is in this program for the highly gifted, which you can read on your screen. Um, and I described the program, and with us tonight is Teri Dressen, who is Robbie's mom, and Robbie is in the explorations program. And we had thought maybe Robbie was coming, but you heard why not.
Well, and he has homework. He takes it very seriously. Um, Robbie is now in fifth grade. He was actually, in that first year the exploration started, so he's done three, four and five. And how I would often describe Robbie prior to going to explorations, he was at Vatness Heights Elementary, which is a wonderful school. My older son went there. But Robbie's goal, even at kindergarten, first grade, was you have to go make a friend on the playground. He wasn't connecting with the kids his age, and already in kindergarten, they were trying to academically help him, help him or give him what he needed. So even in first grade, he was pulled off to the side. So most of first grade, he's reading chapter books. I mean, I think he read all the Harry Potter series in third grade in a week and a half. I mean, that's the style in which he works. So I remember meeting with Jo Tate going, "Is White Bear the right place for him? I don't, you know, he's going into third grade." And she said, "Don't pull out of the district yet." And I said, "I love the district." She said, "We're starting this program." So he went in as a very introverted academically in the top one percent, I would say, top one percent, that's just how he functions, as a very quiet kid with very little friends. I went in with two months to go see him. He's like the most popular kid in the class. He ran for student council and he won. He ran for treasurer. He's on the chess team. He's a goalie on the, in the White Bear Lake, one of the White Bear Lake hockey teams. And he won the most minutes read for Lincoln Elementary, and he had to dress in a leather suit and he had to, he had to dance like a rock star. So, and the kids look up to him, and he's so social and he's so happy and he's so attached to the, the, the style in which these kids are taught. Both teachers very much know that these kids learn at different paces. So in some areas, Robbie's probably doing seventh, eighth grade math, and then some areas, he's probably being a typical fifth grader. And the ability to adapt all those kids and have like-minded kids really bonding is something I, he would never get in a traditional classroom.
Thank you, Teri. And then the beauty of the optional program for those who meet the criteria for explorations, some people decide that that isn't a setting they want. They want their child to stay in their neighborhood school, or they want the heterogeneous mix of people. And we have then the cluster level at every building. So again, it's a, it's a win-win because we have the levels of service approach. Um, and the person at the table that I didn't introduce so far is Dan Schmidt, and he is our gifted principal. But Dan has...
Yes, thank you. Strike that.
Dan has fully embraced having the explorations program at his school, and he has really gone above and beyond to learn about gifted learners. And there are, it's not just the easy peasy kind of teaching with these kids. These kids have the social, emotional, probably that the social workers, their social workers will work with some of these kids. They have, um, learning style things that they need to work on. So they're high academic, but they also are kids, normal kids. So we would like to open it up for questions or comments that you might have.
I think I've opened the questioning every round here tonight. Two questions, and the latter, I think Sarah would probably be the best to answer. But, uh, first of all, and I do appreciate how difficult it is planning and teaching a differentiated program. It's a ton of work. No newsflash there for you, right? Um, I was wondering, though, if individual students, whether or not they're identified as gifted and talented, ever have the opportunity temporarily to step up? And what I'm thinking there is, maybe someone's really good at plane trigon, and I'm probably going to speak at secondary levels, I realize this is elementary, really good at plane trigonometry, but would get chewed to pieces if they tried geometric proofs, something like that. So they could go up for a bit and then come back down, uh, just to allow them to explore their own personal limits and interests? I don't know if that's something we do, or if that's something that would be worth considering. Uh, so that's that question. And I don't know if anyone's got an answer tonight for it.
Well, that does go on in ma, in elementary, because they're more self-contained. Um, as far as the secondary, they are placed in a math class based on data, so I don't think they do parts.
I was just saying, I doubt you're getting into geometric proofs in elementary, regardless of how gifted you guys are. But, uh, you know, that's the world I walked in, so that's why I was using those as examples, and that was it. No, I understand the secondary. And that is a very good segue for my other question, Ms. Paul. Elementary, elementary, how does that transition these students into the secondary program? Are these, you know, then the predestined kids that go into the, the advanced placement programs?
I'm going to answer that twofold. Um, first, one of the things that we have done a very good job of is that we offer math courses beyond calculus. We are very unique in this district to have made sure to adjust our programming to the fact that our, we have many students that are taking higher level math at younger, um, grades. And so we have done a really good job to make sure that we are providing the highest level of programming in our district to meet the needs of the students as they go through, for example, math. Um, you'll hear, and, and we will be bringing to you and having a conversation about our credit for learning. You guys passed a policy regarding credit for learning, which means that we are going to make sure to take the approach that students are getting credit. If they're in a middle school math class, that is the same rigor of a math class or the same course that's offered in the high school, that they're getting credit for that learning. So this, this adaptive system that we're trying to make sure to design so that the students fully maximize their learning opportunities is, is very much an area that we are, um, very proud of and being a leader in making sure that we have very responsive programming. Um, we also, um, as we launched this program, um, in the district, students that were identified as gifted and moved through elementary school, they went to middle school. And, um, Jo has done a great job of working with our middle school principals to make sure that students are, um, having, um, small groups, um, if they're needing some social, emotional or skill work, um, that, that is part of, um, a way that, that they need their needs met, um, as part of also being identified as gifted and accelerating academically. So she's continued to really stay and be in conversation to make sure that families see that, um, we're paying attention to the needs of those students, even as they move out of elementary into middle school. So I think we're, we're, um, I think we're really trying to make sure that we are...
So I think we're, I think we're really trying to make sure that we are having the conversation all the way through the system so that every child knows that we're working to meet them where they're at. And whether it's with social work or whether it's in gifted and talented programming, that is something that is a very important design element to what we're doing.
Other question. I have to tell you, my, I have two kids. They're both in their mid to late twenties now. They went through the White Bear system. They went to Lake Erie Elementary School. They love their classroom teachers, but what I would hear the most about was when they came home and said, oh, guess what we did in Reach today? And then in the summer, the summer academy, that filled our conversations at dinnertime for weeks. I mean, those were wonderful programs, and I'm sure Reach is as wonderful now as it was back then. But thanks to all of you for the work you're doing with our most gifted students and Ms. Dressen. Tell your son that the talk about spaghetti his dinner made me really hungry. So thanks to all of you for being here tonight. Thank you. All right, we'll turn to our final agenda item, and that's an update on annual World's Best Workforce update. We'll change the tables here up at the front of the table.
We are going to be sharing stories to really try to bring some life to the narrative that you were provided in your materials this evening. We provided you a comprehensive update of last year's core academic work. Regardless of whatever school a child goes to, there are things that every family can count on that we're going to do to meet every child where they're at. We've heard examples from social work, we've heard examples from gifted and talented programming, and now we're going to take you through the milestones of our World's Best Workforce Plan and just give you, not only just make sure that we get any of your questions answered, but also want to introduce several people that are here in the audience tonight to put a story to the data and the narrative that we provided for you in advance. So we're going to start with the first milestone, which is all students will be prepared for kindergarten. And there's two areas that we wanted to make sure to provide a little more context to. One of the things that we've talked about is the importance of identifying students. If by screening students, we have the opportunity to make sure that we are understanding their needs and, in some cases, identifying them for special education. And Kathleen's just going to share a little more detail behind one of the numbers that was written about in our narrative.
Right. If you refer to your narrative, there's a portion in the early childhood part that talks about nineteen percent of the students that are screened are referred on. And it talked about referred on for re-screen through special education and referred to special education. So I just wanted to clarify that nineteen percent of our kids that go through screening do not end up in special education. That's a pretty high number, pretty high percentage. And so how to explain that is that the students that are screened that fail screening, they are referred then to a special education team for re-screening. That doesn't mean they're referred necessarily for evaluation. So then from that re-screen, if they don't pass, then they'll go on to evaluation. And then when we talk about kids that fail screening and then may go directly on to evaluation of those students, then they're evaluated and a certain percentage of those then will go on to special education. So when we, I went over the numbers with Danielle just to make sure I had the right percentage, because I didn't want you to think, oh, my gosh, what are we doing about, or all those kids are meeting criteria, that seems kind of high. And we figured out it was really about eight or nine percent that end up meeting criteria and receiving services after screening. And that's a wonderful thing. We like to identify students early. We know that our money and our services that we provide and allocate for those students to get early intervention really makes a big difference as they travel through our school system. And, you know, there's many studies, not just in Minnesota, but all over, that affirm this, that we want to catch those kids early and then provide services. So we just didn't want you to think that nineteen percent of the early childhood students were receiving special education services. How she wrote it was correct, but there's a lot of ways to interpret it, so I just asked her for more details, so.
And then the other area we wanted to make sure to give a little more conversation to was, in the narrative, it spoke to the fact that we, there may be a need for greater outreach for student, for some students, specifically those identified as black. In order to mirror our screening, the number of screenings that we have families participating in, for all the reasons that Kathleen just identified, it's really important to get families involved in early screening. And then it said, having more outreach opportunities. And so Tim is going to share some of the things that we're doing specifically to answer to that this year.
Thank you, Sarah. So some extra things we've started doing this year is we have two part-time community outreach staff that are taking the screening to them, so to speak. So instead of waiting for them to come to us, we try to get out to those areas that we think might have people that might have difficulty getting to us. So our two outreach personnel are going out to apartments nearby, meeting up a solid ground, community events, doctors' offices and clinics, food shelves, and our local libraries, and trying to meet those families to them to try to get our screening services to them so their kids can participate in that.
Can I just clarify a little bit? They're really not doing screenings out of the community, but they're bringing, they're notifying people of the screenings. Because it takes a whole team to screen, so, but they're getting the information, these are the screening dates, this is how you come into screening, and then offering some playgroups when they're out at apartment complexes and at solid ground, actually offering classes onsite. So they have to, they still have to come to our site for screening, but they're really trying to get the word out to please bring your children in to get them screened by three. I mean, that's the key, screened by three. And you get a T-shirt, letters go out to families, and that first letter actually gives them a T-shirt that says, Screen by Three, so.
Yes, we have a little, little tiny T-shirt with the little bear and the little screen.
Screen by Three.
Yeah.
So yeah, so we're doing a weekend to get our information out while we're out in those communities to get them in. So we offer, there's a total of twenty-two different Fridays that we do screenings over at Normandy Park to get folks into the building. And then some things we're looking to do possibly in the future is to see if we can't schedule some opportunities in the evenings during the week, or maybe some Saturday mornings to get those families who have parents who are both working during the day and then can't get their child in, into our response. And yeah.
Great. So do you have any questions about our first goal, which is all children are ready to start kindergarten?
Another key topic of information that Kate's trying to gather at these screenings are what kind of barriers with transportation, because transportation is also another huge barrier we have to get our families in. So getting this information out to see if there's something we can do to break those transportation barriers down in the future is another key goal of theirs as well.
All right. Thank you. Yep. All right, our next goal is all third graders can read at grade level. And joining me, we, last year, last year, we really appreciated the support around how we really dug deep as a system and really tried to look at why we were not accelerating students to be reading at grade level by third grade. And we brought to you our literacy coaching model. And we went not straight from design to implementation, and as you read, we actually saw some promising outcomes in terms of our student achievement data, which I just wanted to make sure to, behind that data, give you the opportunity to meet one of our literacy coaches and meet one of the teachers that she was working with, and for them to share a little bit about what their experience has been like.
So hello, I'm Deb Tebow. I've met some of you before, I think a lot of you. And this is my second year as a literacy coach, twenty-first year as a White Bear educator. But first of all, I just have to say, my job is amazing, and I have not had any second thoughts since I took the job. I'm energized all day by the students I work with at Hugo and Onika, and by the teachers especially. So that's me.
And I'm Elizabeth Almer. I teach third grade. This is my seventeenth year in the district. And yeah, I was a curriculum leader, so when it started bringing up the conversation of even needing literacy coaches, I was part of that. It's just been really great to see Deb come in, and I feel like there's been so much growth. So just an example, like last year, I went to the Data Retreat as a curriculum leader at the beginning of the school year, and it was in the summer, actually. And we looked at all the standards and MCA testing, and we broke it down to see what, like, what were the things our kids were really struggling with? Well, the number one thing in reading was actually text features. Like, they didn't know how to use parts of a book and how important they were. And so that was third grade and fourth grade at Onika's biggest focus last year. And the greatest thing is, is that a lot of times as educators, we go to a training and we get research and books read to us or articles given to us. And to have like a hands-on person to be able to model, and then she'll model a lesson, she'd come in, she'd have these anchor charts and things for text features, and she would model it, she would teach the children how to do it, she'd have a hands-on activity where they'd dig into the books. And then I would try it a couple times with other books or things. And then I had the conversation, I could go say, well, this didn't go really well for me, how can I improve that? And then Deb would always come in and she could observe as well. So that happened numerous times throughout the year. She was in today. And we're starting a new thing in literacy for in writing, it's Words Their Way. And we're just starting that up this year. And I said, Deb, I go, I have to differentiate all these words and vocabulary with five different groups in my room of kids, because as they're speaking of, I'm a cluster teacher as well. And so, and then I also have kids in special ed. So it's like, I have these words where some kids are trying to learn the word opposition and the word rules to that, and some people are on the word kite. And she came in today and she did a lesson and taught my kids, like, what the purpose was of why we're doing it, and she set it up in my classroom. And my kids are like so ready to go. So I just thank you as a teacher, for one, like, giving her us, because I actually feel like I have a teacher that I look up to, and I know everyone in our building really respects her. So thank you.
And then we, thank you. I love, this is one of the reasons I love my job. And it was kind of to tie in what you said, when I've been going into different rooms and I'll say, what do you think the reason is we're doing this? Many kids are saying, it's getting us ready for college. So it's really, you know, they're looking at the future and how this really prepares them. So the big part is, and we looked at the data.
I forgot the main part.
Yeah, the exciting part was, what we did, our collaboration paid off, so I'll let you talk about that.
Yeah, so text features was like the lowest percent of kids in the MCA would meet.
Can I get off to you a little bit more on text features?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so it's one of the standards where kids are, that kids know what a glossary is, what an index is, that they know the difference between diagrams and like the different content boxes, like around the, so it's all the parts of the book of how you can use the book to learn the best and how to use those resources. And so, of course, we're reading teachers, but do we ever think of teaching how to use the book? Because, you know, we think, we think they do that in kindergarten, first grade. But kids struggled with it. I had to give them little assessments all throughout the year last year, and Deb didn't come in one time. She came in many times throughout the year for third and fourth grade. And our MCA, that is not the lowest area anymore, and it really just paid off. And it's also, I just believe, sometimes you get those little ahas as a teacher, and I'm like, oh, my word, this makes sense, that they're connecting so much now more to the book because they know how to use all the parts of it. And it seems so simple, but it also improved our scores, so.
So the model worked in that case? It's worked many times. And again, I think partly, a huge part of it is our teachers, that Hugo and Onika, they're just really open to our policy. We work together, we collaborate all the time, so pretty lucky.
We fight over her.
Yeah.
Well, each area, we would like to spend a lot more time with you on every area, but we just want to give you a little taste. And I do want to also make sure to have you notice that we did put a role of coaching on the bottom of the document, because we could have had the same conversation around the role of our digital learning specialists and the great work that they've been doing and collaborating even with each other, so that ultimately the experience that is being received from the teachers makes sense, and then they're not having multiple people coming at them. And it's just been a great aligned effort across the entire coaching group. So I just wanted to make sure to mention that since we can't highlight everything tonight. But do you have any questions on this second goal of all third graders reading at grade level?
What do you view as what differentiates those kids who are reading well in third grade as opposed to those who are really struggling? You know, I've always thought, well, the strugglers may not have been read to by their parents or their family members, and they haven't had ready access to books as toddlers and younger children. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I believe it's exposure, and I believe it's the lack of experiences. We find, especially in free and reduced lunch kids, they score a lot lower. It was interesting today, because I have a great example of this. We did Words Their Way, and it was a picture sort today that Deb taught my class. Well, I had one little guy in school suspension. Well, I have student teacher too, so I'm like, I got to go teach him this lesson so he knows what he's doing tomorrow. So I went in, and first he just had to name all the pictures, and he didn't know what a STEM was on a flower. And there were like two other pictures. He's like, what is that? What is that? And so it's just so interesting, we just assume they know these simple pictures that we would think are really easy. And so I think that's a lot of the differences, so.
And I think we've just gotten a lot better at diagnosing. You know, we always knew kids struggled, but now we look, is it phonics? Is it fluency? Is it comprehension? And we really are able to target those areas with specific interventions or differentiation that matches the student need and the learner need.
I have a question for this group before we move on. Thank you.
Well, we have, the next part, we have a local goal where we also have included and designed around all students ready for middle school. One of the things I'm going to highlight with support from quite a crew coming up here next is a key college and career readiness that we've had in the district for many years called AVID. And AVID is a program that we have launched in the district that was really designed around an elective course that students could choose to take, that would really help them with a lot of strategies for, you know, organization and metacognition and ways to work with a mentor and get some additional academic supports and study habits, and lots of rich things that help students be successful in rigorous courses. The big focus, why I want this to be part of our conversation, is that we've made an intentional decision to really move towards school-wide implementation of AVID, so that AVID is a key college and career readiness strategy for all students. And so that's a very big undertaking. And so we've got several people that are going to join me up here now coming up. We've got, as they're coming up and I can share with you, we made a decision to move towards having our own district AVID director. That is partly because we want somebody that is going to be providing that expertise to be part of the district every day, instead of here just being here on a limited basis. So I'll let people get settled in, and then I'm going to just broadly tell you the direction we're going with this conversation.
We've got a panel. And I'm Rochelle Michael, and the AVID District Lead this year, and a former AVID teacher and site coordinator, so we've seen some of you guys before doing AVID presentations. It's no secret, as Sarah said, that AVID has been supporting the college-ready goal for several years here. Our site teams have been working very hard with students for over a decade, and providing students with additional supports and instruction in writing, inquiry, reading, organization, and collaboration. And so we've been producing college-ready... And so, we've been producing college-ready students for years. As Sarah mentioned, we want to take this to a different level and we want to, um, really zoom out on our Avid strategies and our Avid systems, leadership, instruction, and culture, so that this becomes our school's systems, leadership, instruction, and culture. So that every student in White Bear Middle and High Schools is, um, uh, engaged in the level of rigor that our Avid students are, that the rigorous courses are open to all students, um, and that we're providing kids with the supports that they need to participate in these classes at high levels. And that we, um, prepare students for, um, college. So, um, I'm not going to tell you a whole bunch about, um, Avid. Um, but, uh, the panel is going to ask you or is going to answer any questions you have to ask. And so, I brought, we brought a, a range here of Avid, um, folks, and we have Stephanie Kervaj at the high school level, and she is a, a Avid teacher and site coordinator. Rita Leonard is an Avid, um, elective teacher as well. Um, and so, they've been producing these college-ready kids for us for several years. Thank you. Um, and we brought two of them, uh, with us. Um, and so, we have Jade Brown and, um, Elias Marquez Guterres. I don't know these guys. So, um, and then, so this is, these folks can talk to you about what the Avid elective looks like at, um, at a high level. So, these kids are nearly college-ready, right?
Yeah.
Um, and then we have, um, Lindsay Masal, right?
Yes.
She just got married this year, so I'm used to calling.
I'm still not used to my name.
Okay, good.
You can tell me whatever.
And, um, Lindsay, um, Lindsay is working with this, uh, new model, kind of a hybrid Avid model at Sunrise Park. And we implemented sixth grade Avid in both of our middle schools this year. And, um, so, this is kind of a glance at what Avid, taking Avid school-wide could look like in a school. Um, it's a pared-down Avid elective in sixth grade, and, um, they might be able to answer some questions. Um, Lindsay brought, Lindsay didn't bring, but, um, Wanzar, right? And Wanzar brought her father, Mr. Mongru. And, um, Wanzar is one of our brand-new Avid newbies, just came to sixth grade, um, from Badness, right? Were you at Badness? Yeah. So, um, that's all I'm going to say about Avid. So, but we're very excited about, um, teaming with, uh, the instructional leaders, um, principals, and teams at the high schools and middle levels to, um, take this to a new level. And what questions do you have for us?
Well, I have one for either Jade or Elias, because you're the old kids up there. Tell me how you think Avid has given you some extra help in getting you, because you both said, "Yep, I'm college-ready," you're both nodding. What has Avid, how has Avid helped you along that path?
Well, I guess I could say like before, I wasn't like the type of student that would like be engaged at school. I was kind of like the person that's like, "Oh, I'm going to do everything last minute and just like see where I end up." And I didn't really like have a strategy plan, like when it came to like, I guess, focusing on like the different aspects of like my classes. So, like, learning all of like the inquiry and study and note-taking skills, I guess like that kind of helped me along the way. Because before I had like no knowledge of it whatsoever. And so, I guess like if I didn't have that, I'd probably be kind of dumped in all my classes. But I guess I kind of like helped improve a lot of things.
Well, I started Avid in eighth grade and like, starting that early like brought me the idea of like, "Oh, what do I want to do after high school?" And obviously, college. And Avid helped me like think of, or, at, at, as early as eighth grade, thinking about colleges that I want to go to, um, majors that I want to take. So, and it pushed me a lot, actually, in Avid. You know, starting early is really good. Uh, before eighth grade, I had all regular classes, no advanced. And joining Avid, you have to take at least one advanced class. And that scared me a lot. But, um, I did really good, actually. You know, it pushed me and, you know, they, Avid, you know, it guides you. Yeah.
Other board members, questions for our students?
Actually, I've got a couple of administrative questions, so you guys can take a shot if you like. Um, first of all, I heard school-wide Avid, that's the middle schools, right? I mean, because once you get into the, the upper grades, it, then you'd be competing against the, the college, you know, coursework, right? College in classroom, PSEO. So, you don't go school-wide Avid at South and North Campus, do you, or do you?
Yes.
You do?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, how does that square then?
Well, we, these, these two folks are taking Avid elective, and they're juniors and, junior and senior, right?
Senior.
Junior, senior. So, it, it replaces one of the electives already that they've been taking. So, um, this gentleman's been taking his Avid elective since he was in eighth grade, so he's not taking some other things that he could be taking. Um, Avid school-wide is a culture and systems shift, a leadership, um, and instructional, and I wouldn't say it's a departure from what we're doing by any stretch, um, because we have a lot of great things in place in our schools. It's more of a, um, it's more of a question of aligning the things that we're doing, um, with these Avid systems that have worked for almost fifty years nationally, and just been kicking out college kids left and right. So, we just know that, we know so much as Avid site team members and Avid elective teachers, um, and Avid principals, that, um, this, this Avid system works, so why should we just keep it for these kids who want to be in this elective class? I mean, if the method, if methodologies are effective, have everybody use these strategies. Um, let's have everybody have the same expectations school-wide for every kid in that school. And so, let's just talk the talk in every classroom and not just our Avid elective.
The other thing is, and I think I know the answer, and I think the answer is a huge advantage in the White Bear Avid program, but the faculty and staff are at least at the core level, all district employees, are they not?
Yeah, absolutely.
Did I come through?
Oh, yeah.
Programs where it's all AmeriCorps volunteers, which is great, but I mean, the CAD rechanges every year, and there, the rapport is really, takes a long time to redevelop every year as you move on, you bring in a whole new, uh, group of teachers and things like that. And whereas here, you'd have the consistency, which I would really think would help the, um, cohesiveness and the rapport that students have with the faculty members.
Yeah.
And it's got to, you know, influence the results.
I think you're, are you speaking to our Avid tutors? So, in the Avid elective?
Nope.
No? Okay. All right.
I've come out of programs where the entire program was taught by outside volunteers.
Yeah, that doesn't sound bad.
This might be a good time for maybe Stephanie to, she's, she's somebody I have so much respect for. She is such a teacher that you just feel what her commitment has made, um, and the difference it's made in the lives of the students she touches. And I don't know if you would be willing to insert, um, you know, to address this question or whatever's on your mind that you're giving of your time to be here. I would love for them to hear from you.
Sure. Um, well, I think our Avid teachers that we have are all district employees. They're all, we're all very committed. Um, and we've focused so far a lot on developing our Avid elective students and making them college-ready. So, for example, the twenty-two students we graduated last year, we've got going to all different kinds of colleges. Uh, there's one, we got a full ride to Augsburg. We, um, last year's senior class of twenty-two had, I wrote it down, um, got seven hundred thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars in offered scholarships. And that's just among twenty-two kids. And so, we know it works for, for the students. And Rochelle sort of asked me like, "Well, why does it work?" And I had to like pause and think about that to share with you, because I know it works, I see the results, it's working for these kids. And we want to sort of change the culture, so it's not just about the kids in the Avid elective. Like, we, we still have that, it's still an important piece, but we want to see all kids as Avid kids. Okay? And I think Avid is a program that forces you to, um, it forces the responsibility for learning on the student. So, it can't be about the teacher, it can't be about the sage on the stage. The teacher cannot do the heavy, heavy lifting, um, in this program. And so, to sort of look at everything through that lens, the writing, the reading, the inquiry, the collaboration, like, these students have to do all that, or they would not be successful. And what we're trying to do is expand that school-wide, have more teachers viewing things through that lens. I hope that makes sense.
In response to, the first thing that I think of is the argument that one reason, and it seems like it'd be a pretty big reason, that it's successful in the Avid elective program is that it's elective. So, the student's making a conscious choice, maybe, you know, as a parent, um, to do this, as opposed to, you know, to me, it's more difficult to make it school-wide somehow, some kids aren't ready. So, that, that's just the thought.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Um, I think that even though the kids in the elective have that drive for college, the strategies that we teach in Avid are good for all kids. Okay, they're note, how to take notes, how to ask a good question, how to ask a high-level question. And no matter whether they plan on going to college or not, those are skills that they're going to need at some point, whether it's speaking skills. And the way that Avid teaches it is really intentional. So, even if there's a kid who doesn't care, exposing them to Cornell notes, or having all of their teachers use Cornell notes instead of this note-taking system, this note-taking system, where they have to learn seven different systems based on their teachers, if they're just using this one system that works, that's going to help them whether they want it or not. And I think Avid is really intentional about that. I don't know if that made sense.
I would have wanted to think that in theory, we've taught many of those things outside of Avid. Your, your focus on the very intentional and consistency, I think, is important. Can I ask you?
Of course.
Um, I forget your name.
Juan.
Sixth grader?
Oh, don't call her sixth grader.
Um, thanks for being here, and I just wanted, wanted to hear, um, what do you think of the program?
After a few weeks in it.
Yeah, we've got more east to go.
What's the, you know?
Favorite thing, please?
Um, I think Avid is a program that helps you with your organization skills. And it's a program that, um, it, it helps you be independent in a way that when you get older, you'll look back on the program that you were in, or if you were just in it, and you'll think about how many resources it helped you with it. And it will open up so many doors, and you have to learn to be committed to what you want your goal to be. And, and. My goal is to either be, um, the police detective or, uh, a singer.
What's your favorite thing about Avid so far?
Um, that most kids, um, they're not too organized. Um, when they get into the program and they hear that you guys are going to be like helped on your organization skills, they're like, "Oh, great, I can do this." But like, when they hear, um, organization skills, they think the teacher's going to be there to help them all the time, and they don't realize that if you're in this program, organization counts on you first.
Other questions? Ms. Masters? I was just going to say, in response to Mr. Kimball's question, as someone who left North Campus not too long ago, about a year and a half ago, I saw Avid start and spread and get shared on professional development days. Cornellian notes spread like some sort of fungus. They took over the entire school. And lots of people liked them, and they all learned them, whether it was their personal learning style or not. And I know the organization helped kids a lot, and they no longer had to do the same assignment three times. They could find the first one. So, no, I saw Avid, it can be a culture, whether they take that class or not. The, the whole staff finds good pieces and Avid teachers share. And lots of times, they're not teaching Avid all day, they're in other subject areas too. So, those skills spread.
To Chapman.
Just two brief comments. Uh, first off, thank you for being here today. It's really humbling to hear. Uh, and so, we really are grateful that you're here. Um, in terms of the Avid program, uh, I'm really glad to hear that it is broadening out. Just from our own family's sake, when it, uh, a few years ago, when, when our first, our oldest, who is now a sophomore, entered, uh, uh, middle school, we were really excited when we got, you know, heard about Avid and things. Well, then we realized that, "Gosh, he's in band and he's got a foreign language," and he would have to give up one of those in order to elect into Avid, and, and it just, we decided to just, you know, let him do what he wanted to do there. So, um, Avid wasn't in the mix for him. Same way with our, our second guy, he, he could use Avid or, or what Avid has to offer. Same type of thing, same scenario, band, foreign language, so forth. Um, and they really, by their own admission, they will say that organization is a huge thing to them, the executive functioning skills and development of that. And so, I'm really glad to hear that it is, you know, uh, getting broadened out beyond just the elective course. Because I, I, you know, as you, the, the students here have said, uh, students in general, I think, could use some help, uh, in organization and some of those, uh, skill sets that Avid offers. So, really glad to hear it.
Any other questions, Cameron?
I guess, I, I, we're very fortunate to have a parent up here with us, and I just wanted to make sure to give him the opportunity to share what's on his mind about the programming before we go on.
Well, first of all, thank you so much, Jesse Mongru, the daughter of Wanzar, who has spoke, exists with us. Um, I want to thank the entire school district. I think this is, you have board members here, also the superintendent. So, that's, that's a proof of, since we came here, I heard other things that you were talking about, uh, the tech program. We call it tech when I was in the school district, which is a talent, a gift program, and some of the other things you were talking about. It shows when the more the third school districts in the school, in the twin cities, you're on the right track. So, I want to thank you on behalf of all the parents who may not be here tonight, uh, that you are on the right track as a school district, to give these young people a lifelong, if I recall, uh, opportunity that you already doing in the school policies. I appreciate that. that. Including the tech, the, 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 the program that she's in, or the children, the students are in. USAID is not the least, I mean, not, it's not the highest in terms of days in school. You have 184 school days, school year, when the China have over 200 days, at least 200 days. So, all these programs will help to prepare America for the 21st century in my view, as we grab towards all the competition, China, India, Nigeria, the list goes on. So, I think this is a good thing that you are doing among all these, more than 13 school districts in the twin cities, this is good. So, as a parent, I wanna thank you for all that you are doing, work together to help these young people get the, the future that they need for America to be, continue to be up there as a leader. Thank you so much.
Anything else, Ms. Paul?
We don't want her to know.
She's been hiding behind...
I was the driver, I wasn't talking tonight. Jade has had so much growth. I had her last year as a student, and this year, and she's like a true leader in my class. When Steph said, "Who do you have?", and I went, "Jade, seriously."
Just like every year that I've gone into it, we've had, like, new teachers coming in, and like, the whole concept of it is to have, like, the same teacher with, like, with you. But we just keep getting so many students, so like, we keep switching teachers, so it's like, every single year I've been here, it's like, oh, new teacher, here's Jade, 'cause like, I've been in it for seven years, so like, the thing is, it's like, I'm like the, I guess, like, the only one that's been in it the longest, so it's like, sometimes fun being the student teaching the teacher.
So, now we've learned.
Jase, well, I know one of you has one more year, one of you has two more years before college, but what are you talking about, what you might wanna study in college?
And where?
And where?
Okay, I mean, I mean, senior year, I guess, like, I wasn't really forced to think about it. October is the, is the month that we're supposed to be applying for all of our college stuff. I know that I wanna take the opportunity to study abroad and go somewhere, I guess, different. I don't know if I wanna stay, like, I know, like, at first, I wanna do my journals, just like, at a community college, and I wanna do something within, like, the psychology field, so, somewhere like, around there. I don't really know where I wanna go, or like, what aspect, I guess, of psychology that I wanna focus on, but I know I'm somewhere in that circle.
Well, that's great, Jade. How about you, Elias?
Well, Avid, so, every once in a while, they have, like, presenters or speakers that come from a different type of careers, and that, like, helps a lot, you know, it opens my mind into, like, thinking about, oh, maybe I do wanna do this career that I've never even heard of, or thought of doing. And, um, I don't know, my mind has changed a lot through the years, too. Last year, I was thinking about working, or after college, being in the law, so, as a lawyer, maybe.
That's true.
Yep.
You love lawyers.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't know, Avid just helped me, like, have an open mind for new careers.
That is spectacular. That's great, Elias. Well, thank you to all of you for, for choosing to spend your evening with us, especially a big thanks to you three kids. And you know what? We just have the graduating Avid class.
We invited you to the Avid ceremony the last week.
Who's the seat?
Yeah, keep your test in, keep your test in second class. We're gonna have to... I'll... We're gonna have to...
It's Elias.
Thank you so much.
It's Juan.
Do we have more? Do we have more? Yep, we do. Okay. We're short here. Okay, and, um, the last important narrative I wanted to make sure to bring to you tonight, we, as you know, and what we could not have done without you, is that we've really moved in the direction of being very intentional about college and career readiness, because of all the doors that that opens for our students. And one of the things that we spent a lot of time doing is really working with, um, community partners and organizations to provide summer programming for career, career exploration. And this is Losha, and his mom, Mrs. Hanson, and Losha participated in our construction summer program, and, and I'm just so appreciative that he was willing to come and just share a little bit about his experience. So, I don't wanna put him on the spot to get a bunch of questions necessarily, because I, I just wanna make sure to honor the fact that he's here just to share a little bit about what his experience was, and then he'd probably be open for questions after that, but I wanna make sure he has a chance to just kind of share a little bit about, you know, what's on his mind, in terms of... You talk at the, the group before the Badness High School Economic Development Corporation over at Jimmy's, 'cause I know there was a group of the kids who, okay, there was a group of the kids who went through that, that internship, Avid internship program this summer?
He was at the...
The Minnesota Trades Academy. Oh, yeah. Excellent. Yeah.
I saw that celebration, graduation. I was so impressed with all the work this summer, you guys, yes, amazing.
So, if you just wanna share what's on your mind in terms of the opportunity, then Mrs. Hanson was also gonna share a little bit, from her perspective as a parent.
I know I had, like, a lot of experience, like, different construction areas. Like, when I first started, I thought it was just like one construction, like, it was just one thing, but now I've figured out there's, like, many of them. And my favorite one was, like, the cement masons. I had a lot of fun and a lot of experience, lots of hands-on.
Perfect, yeah.
Yes, and so, although Losha's not maybe college-bound, this was a really great experience for him, and helped him cement what he would like to do in his next...
Help him cement?
Yes. And he does like to cement the best. So, it was a great experience for him, he had a lot of fun.
And as a board, we've been hearing about the wonderful career opportunities for those with skilled trades, you know, good jobs, good paying jobs, and there's a lot to offer our students out there. I think Losha's one of the many students that are part of us being proud that what we're offering, the opportunities for him right out of high school, don't require him to go to college, and like you said, there are livable wage jobs that are great paying, that can provide you a great lifestyle, that they need workers, and we've got people that just need a chance to explore all the different opportunities to land on the specific area they may wanna pursue next, and you're in high demand, and it does, certainly does not require college to be in high demand, just needs a person to have the chance to really get a better idea of cement, their thinking, and what they wanna pursue, so. But we're very appreciative of your time and you coming, because it's a big part of the work that we're doing together, and for you to be able, be willing to come and share your experience and your success is very much appreciated. Does anybody have any questions? Keeping in mind that Will may be a man of few words, so we might wanna direct our questions to either Ms. Paul, or I think Will might wanna take one. Any, any questions, comments? I wish Mr. Mullen were still here. Mr. Mullen on our board has been such a champion for, for the work that we're doing with, with the skilled trades, so, yeah, go ahead.
Are you, then, thinking of going into masonry?
Yeah. I'm looking for the highway.
And as a senior?
Sure.
And you might not have been aware of, aware of this oper, or field, if you hadn't had this experience? Great.
And I would just add that Dr. Keanu would've been here, she, she had a conflict in her schedule, but she's been a great champion of this work as well, so, wanted to make sure to mention her.
Will, just really a word of encouragement to you, coming mostly from my military engineering background, worked with a lot of cement, it's critical. I mean, it's literally the structure of our nation, and so, even though it doesn't require a college degree, you think of all the things that would stop if you had poorly made cement, improperly reinforced cement, you know? So, it's very, very critical, and it's something you can be very proud of going into. I wish you very, very much luck with it.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Big thanks to you, Will, for giving up part of your evening to spend it with us. Thanks so much. And then we just wanted to make sure that, any questions that you had about what you read, if the one thing I wanted to make sure that we had a chance to talk about was the graduation rate. Obviously, we are designed to make sure that we have all of our students graduate, and when you have our world's best workforce milestone, is that it's a four-year graduation rate. And so, while world's best workforce statute holds us to a four-year graduation rate, we believe it's important to make sure that we do whatever it takes to stay with our students, for them to graduate, even if it takes a little bit longer. Our graduation rate number, you'll see a percentage decreased, and there's actually some really good news as to what we did, that actually is great in the design of what we're doing, but actually shows up as a decrease in our four-year graduation rate. And so, I've asked Brian to share a few comments about that.
Sure, um, just, I just wanna let you know, right now, the, the, even though we're including an estimate of our 2017 graduation rate, is part of our world's best workforce information, the 2017 graduation rate isn't official until mid to late February, so the state is still working on it. But from, we did have a, I did estimate, based on the data that we have, a small decrease, about three percentage points in the graduation rate, from about 91 in 2016 to about 88 in 2017, in which, you know, like I said, our, our goal is for all students to graduate in four years, or in the number of years that fits sort of where they are and their path to, to post a secondary success. And I think that's one of the positives that we've seen. There are three categories that kids are in as far as graduation, in the class of 2017, they could graduate in the four years, they could be a withdrawal, or what you think about typically as a student who's dropped out of high school, or they could be a continuing student. And so, whereas our overall four-year graduation rate is down a little bit, our percentage of our graduating, or the class of 2017 who has withdrawn, who has dropped, has decreased also. That's gone down a percentage point. Where we've seen growth is in our students who are continuing on at the ALC, working towards the five-year, graduating in five years, or graduating in six years. So, we have about 50 students from the class of 2017 that are continuing on, either at the ALC or at Transition Plus. And of those 50 students, I think it's six of them are at Transition Plus, so, going to school actually, until they're, most of them until they're 21, having their, meeting, again, serving those students and, and being successful beyond high school. Of the students who are continuing, eight of them have already graduated. They just didn't graduate within that, you know, in, in time for the four-year. So, we're seeing an expanding, an expansion of kids who, you know, have needs that are not, are not, do not fit into the traditional four-year graduation rate, but we are still serving them, meeting their needs, and moving them towards, whether it be work experience, independent study, or full-time at the ALC, moving towards graduation in that way.
So, with that, do you have any questions about anything you've read related to our, any of our goals in the world's best workforce, or specific to graduation? If I can ask you a thought, graduation, if a, if a senior comes up on that date in June, and they're just like one, one credit shy, and they missed it by a little bit, do we have any summer school that they could enroll in right away and maybe finish, get their, get their diploma?
Absolutely. Like I said, eight kids did do that last year, but they, it does not count as, as part of four-year graduation.
On the graduation date?
Right. So, we have eight kids with their graduation date being the end of June, beginning of July.
Okay. But they walked. They walked, but that doesn't, you know, that and a dollar fifty'll get you a bottle of water out of the machine, I mean, you know. Chatman?
So, in follow-up to that, the state is counting, what, the, the day that we hold our graduation as the, the cutoff, or count?
You know, I, I don't know the specific, it's, it's in June, it's not our, necessarily our graduation date, it's a, a date in June. I know if you, if you are listed as graduated on the 30th of June, you are not part of the four-year. I don't know.
Ms. Masters, did you have a question?
I was just saying the same thing, it's, it's just a matter of time for some of them, but the extended programs we have that keep them rolling without just dropping are the really important piece.
It's huge.
So, they somehow got off-rail with something that they needed to finish, and with any luck, the extra time they put in, and I've seen that, with some of the kids that I know left North with a grand career of working at something that looked like a lot of money when you're 16, who were back in a couple of months, and then they're off-track. But then they get into a program that's really valuable sometimes, whether it's going up to 916 or, or whatever, in a trade, or just finishing, getting more college credits, so, I think we shouldn't feel too beat up, we should be proud with our retention rate and the completion rate, that's the really important part.
Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Kimball?
You know, I, I agree with the, you know, it's really important to have options to continue, and doing well with that, but I, I don't know, I'm, I'm a little cynical in, in, you know, I don't want us to sound like we're satisfied with the 88%, and that's a little bit what I, what I'm kind of hearing here, and so, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't think it's a critical thing that we have 90%. I think we measure human beings' growth by more than if they graduate in four years, but the state does, and so, I mean, so apparently we're, you know, wanting to do that, so I, I think I'd rather hear that either we're just not focusing on that, or what are we gonna do to make it 90%, plus then have 100%, you know, in five or six years. But, you know, the fact is, we've, we've hired a bunch of coaches, I see that on here too, to help with it and stuff, so, what's, you know, is, is, is that toward the interest of getting people to graduate in four years, or is it something else? I'm just wanting to hear more than just reasons why it's okay that it's 88. And what was it like, we had 91% in 16, 88 in 17, do we remember what it was in 15?
Yeah, we hover above and below 90. 14 and 15 were both about 89, and, yeah, last year was about 91, and then 88, so.
Do we think we can get, students who just don't catch on, but now we have Avid, I would think that, and that's school-wide Avid, and...
Well, I'm gonna take us in a little different direction, so, our principals are responding with a sense of urgency around looking at leading indicators, the ABCs, attendance, behavior, and course completion. They're finding more ways to really look and monitor, adjust, in order to identify things that we see as trends that, that a student may need additional supports in those areas. Our principals are very laser-looking at attendance right now, to be specific, in terms of making sure that, that whatever we can do and the supports we can provide, and, and our system is designed to make sure that we are supporting students and following up so that they're in school. So, I, I would say I've seen more of a sense of urgency around finding those opportunities to proactively see it. I don't think anybody feels good at the end of a year to see a number fall, but I feel like they're really providing some excellent leadership to make sure that we're really being thoughtful and having more touchpoints throughout the year, so that we're making sure that we're not missing anybody. I, I very much appreciate your question, because I, I don't think, I can't, I can see so many faces of people that care very much whenever a student does not meet that goal of, of walking with their peers. Students are not walking with their peers to graduate when they're not, don't have met the credits for graduation, and I think we've got teachers and leaders that want that experience for every student, and are doing a lot of things right now in their planning, and in order to make that happen. I know the staff-to-student ratios at the ALC are much better than they are at South Campus, for example, but I've always been so impressed by Gretchen Harriman and the teachers at the ALC, and all of the very personalized attention they give ALC students to make sure that they finish up when, you know, the majority of them finish up when the rest of their students are graduating. Just an enormous amount of work. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Wilson?
Going the other direction, if you're prepared, Brian, or Tim, or Wayne, October 1st is looming very large on the horizon. What are our preliminary numbers looking like? Are we going up, or by how much about, or?
Our enrollment, yeah?
Enrollment, yeah.
Tim, you probably have this...
It's, it's dropped a little bit. We don't have specific numbers at South and North Campus. We typically lose students who just transfer somewhere and never report to school. It's not a really significant, I think we were conservative to say some would probably be somewhere in the 50 to 60 student range that we would lose at the high school in this first month. I'm not sure it's gonna be that many, I think it'll be less than that, but we'll know soon.
Are we losing more than we're gaining, or about the same, or?
Typically, we lose a little more than we gain in the month of September, because we have students who are enrolled here. Elementary families are pretty good, but they're not coming back, and high school families are, are quite as good at letting us know. And so, students may have enrolled at a different school, it's not all us.
Any other questions or comments? Well, Mr. Morris, Ms. Paul, thank you. Ms. Paul, you did a tremendous amount of work tonight with all of our... Thank you, thank you for your time. And I also wanna thank Ashley and McKenna, both of you here at our first work study meeting. This is where a lot of the guts of the work of the school board gets done, so we're very pleased both of you could, could join us after whopping those tennis balls around, so, thank you so much. Yes? Were there any questions either we had, or, or anything tonight?
I guess one question that I was thinking of is what would school-wide Avid look like? What would that look like in the classroom? How would that differ from classrooms that we have right now?
A couple of things that, that you would feel is about a climate that actually really used a lot of the college-going, bringing that college conversation to the forefront, and specific strategies that, for critical reading... and specific strategies that, for critical reading skills and things that, that have been working with that core group of students in the elect of bringing those explicit strategies and more intentional leadership around conversations about, with students about the things that we know are proven to be effective for students to be either owning themselves in terms of their experience or teachers in terms of the mindset they bring for students that are going to be taking rigorous courses in college. I'm going to let Tim Gold add anything since he's been in that principal role for many years.
I would say that it wouldn't be a really dramatic change from what you see in the classroom, because right now, a lot of teachers are using Avid strategies.
Yeah, I've noticed.
Yeah, and so what, what we think would be helpful for students is if you could consistently expect that teachers would be employing consistent strategies from room to room, right? And we're getting closer to that. We're not there yet. And at our high school, our teachers were asked in their, within their student learning goals, that they add Avid instructional strategies to meet those goals. So they set goals based on how their students are going to achieve that here. And one of the things we've asked them to do is identify which Avid strategies you're going to implement as a teacher to get there. Right? So, so hopefully, we'll start seeing more and more of those strategies being used in the classroom.
Do you have anything, McKenna?
Oh, I was in reach, actually. What's the difference between reach and exploration?
Okay. We, at each of the levels of services, students that, that are taken out of class to be in a small group to kind of take on a special project would be like your experience in reach. Explorations is a school within a school. It's actually at Lincoln Elementary and they are with other students that have been identified as highly gifted and experienced school within, within a classroom of students that have all been identified as highly gifted.
So when they come into middle school, are they already more advanced than the advanced kids in the regular elementary school that they will need more advanced us in middle school, like more than on the primary doctor?
Some yes and some no. You may see a student accelerate more than a grade level in a specific area, or you may have a student that was able to have, have an opportunity, like the parent shared of having a chance to really connect and make friends and be a leader and have some of their social needs addressed a little more explicitly in that setting. We have students that are growing, accelerating their learning at, within the classroom in with reach or in a cluster classroom. So that's something that we're just really trying to be thinking about, that personal design for every student in terms of what they need. So it's not something that only happens with students that are in explorations, but students that have, have also chose not to go and maybe we're getting reach services but may need to accelerate in a math class or a different class.
And then by senior year, will there be classes advanced enough for them, or maybe they don't want to take PSEO, like go to a college to do it?
We, we would like for students to experience the comprehensive experience of high school in white bear. So we don't want students to have to be going away from our schools in order to get what they need. And I think we've done a really good job and we will continue to work on making sure we have college-level courses offered in the high school to make sure that we, we can meet the needs of all of our students. But that's been an exciting journey for us and I think we're on the right track to make sure that we are providing the right programming. Thank you. Yeah.
Any questions, both of you? Anything else from anybody? I'm seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Add a adjourn. I'm adjourned.
I'll second that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.